All right, at 6:00 PM, I'll call the April 12th meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. You have a good crowd tonight. I love, always love to see people in here and show an interest in what's happening in Macon County. Any announcements?
Announcement. I do, we put this under announcements, Mr. Chairman, in recognition of the Rotary Clubs of Macon County. The members worked on a service project on county-owned property, so I've asked for those folks to be with us tonight. I would like to introduce you to the President of the Daybreak Rotary, Angela Deals, and the Service Chair of the Noon Club Rotary, Amy Mancheck. So. So, Mr. Chairman, in the fall, the Rotarians and FHS Interactors and Highlander Roofing, they trimmed the trees around the pavilion, redone. If you've not seen that pavilion, this is the one that we would call behind the shopping center. As you go down the Greenway, and it's owned by the county, but it was gotten terrible shape. So these two Rotary Clubs banded together, and they did get a grant. Angie, you want to tell them a little bit more about that?
We did. We applied for a grant from the Nana Hill Health Foundation. They granted us $5,000 as part of their environmental health program. And then we also applied for grants internal to Rotary, so we had another couple thousand dollars from outside our community from Rotary. And then through our own fundraising supplied the rest of the funds.
And several businesses locally were really nice and donated as well.
Yes, so we should mention them. Highlander Roofing donated the extra time and equipment that wasn't covered by the grant funds. And Schubler's Mulch provided the mulch that we spread as well. So thank you to all of them, so a real community effort.
So we have several Rotarians on this board. I think you know this one, he's in the Noon Club, I'm in the Daybreak. Jim is in the Highlands Club. Paul was in, was one of the initial members in the Daybreak Club. And I don't know if Josh ever joined or not. And Derek, Derek, he's in the Noon Club, he just don't go. So. But on behalf of this board and the citizens of the county, all those literally hundreds of people, thousands of people who use the Greenway and use that facility, we just wanted to say a special thank you and how much we appreciate the Rotary Clubs stepping up and doing this. And there's a lot of work to be done, as you all know, so we appreciate very much. Thank you.
Anything else? Pardon? Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, before, I just want to say one thing before we get started too far into this. She'll be presenting later, but Ms. Angie Kinsland is approaching her retirement after 30 years of excellent service to Macon County. So this will probably be the last time that she is in front of this board. This will be the last time she's. Of this board as an employee, so. Just want to say how much we appreciate her work and everything she's done for 30 years of her life for this county. And you'll truly be missed, and from the bottom of our heart, thank you very much.
All right, I have a letter from the Fraternal Order of Police stating that on Friday, May 13th, they will be holding the annual law enforcement memorial program to pay tribute to the officers of North Carolina that have given their lives in performance of their duty. Tribute again will take place at the Town Square Gazeebo commencing at 12:00 noon on Friday, May 13th. All right, if all rise, I'll observe a moment of silence. I'm going to ask Lori to lead us in the place tonight.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to open up our public hearing. Angie? 911 Addressing Coordinator. To consider proposed names for new roads in Macon County and to assign a range of road numbers in connection with the same. To consider requests for road name changes, to change the range of numbers for certain roads, to consider requests for deletion of certain roads, and to consider a change of range of numbers for certain roads. Do we have any, is there a public comment sheet up there? Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Well, all of these roads have been posted and advertised as according to the North Carolina General Statutes. And we propose that you accept them as they're presented.
Have you heard any phone calls or?
I have phone calls all the time, but not relative to the hearing.
I have not received anything personally. Sometimes when we go to road names, I'll get a call or something, but. Does anyone here sign up, would like to speak to this? Road names? I don't have anybody signed up, so. Any questions? We have a motion. Hang on a second. I may have to close the public hearing first. We'll get any questions. Come out of a closed hearing. Motion ready. Motion back Commissioner Higgin to approve as presented. Right, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you so much. It was easy. I appreciate y'all. Thank you. Y'all, been a pleasure to work with.
So your retirement thing is when? May the?
Sixth.
Six, from one to three. At O'Poltoff.
Yes, sir.
And we'll have something to eat, right?
Yes, sir, but no presentations.
Yes, there'll be presentations.
All right, public comment. We have Tracy Dogen.
My name is Tracy Dogen, and this may be premature, but I saw on the agenda and the handouts that the animal control is proposing changes. And some of them I oppose, and I wanted to make sure that you have my information as to why I oppose them. And I can also, I'm not sure if I speak at the next meeting as far as the opposition to the changes, but I wanted to make sure that you have the information so that you don't go forth with the changes until you've heard from the public, I guess.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but I believe before we could specifically make any changes in ordinance, it'd have to be a public hearing. Just like we just had about road names, so you would have an opportunity if this board decides to move forward with any changes at all to that. That we haven't discussed whether or not we're going to, but if we do, there'll be a public hearing.
And there'll be a public hearing automatically, or do I need to add this to the next?
No, it's automatic with any opposes.
Okay, well, just so you have in your possession, you know, one item that is really important is the fact that animal abuse reporting can be anonymous. And the other is that the changes that they're proposing on animal care, shelter, water, food, are still not specific enough to be enforceable. And so therefore, I don't even know why they're addressing them, because that's the problem we have right now is that a clearly suffering animal can't be removed because it's not within the law. I mean, the law's too vague. So that's, I'm giving you proposed changes and a statement from an attorney who has reviewed our ordinances as well as North Carolina statutes regarding reporting can be anonymous. So I don't know why it's an issue, but it is. So I got one for each, I think, one, two, three, four. I got six copies.
Give the other one to the lawyer.
Give one to the lawyer? The county attorney? Okay, and that's basically it, so. Although he's aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Not, we're going to move on forward. All right. Any additions to the agenda?
Just one real short presentation under reports. I do have the latest report on the DOT, on the roads, bridges, and the completion dates, and what's in progress and what's coming, Mr. Chairman.
We'll do that as 9E, E as in Edward. Anything else? Let's get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor? All right, reports and presentations, proposed change to Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act consortium. David Garrett, Commissioner Bill?
Yes, sir. It's my previous service Vice Chair of the Southwest Commission. Tonight, we have Mr. David Garrett, who is over our workforce development, and Mr. Russ Harris, who is Executive Director of the Southwest Commission. What you have before you gentlemen is a proposal that has been unanimously passed by the Executive Committee of the Southwest Commission on how the workforce development is situated and how it performed and what we're doing. David Garrett does an excellent job with the workforce development in our area. And long story short, as David will get into, they want to expand our workforce development into several more counties. And there again, anytime the seven far west counties, we get expanded into anything, as we all know, I've never seen a good result. So that's what David's going to speak to tonight, and at the end of his presentation, board, we would ask that we could support the Southwest Commission's position on this. So David, you have the floor. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill, and appreciate the time you're giving me today. Much like Ronnie, Mr. Bill was saying was that on March 30th, recommendation from the NC Works Commission, which is a governor's appointed workforce board across the state, recommended that workforce boards look into realigning our boundaries. Currently, there's 23 workforce boards. That'll become 22 on July 1st of this year. One of the recommendations was an eight, eight board across of our state, representing all 100 counties. And of course, that would turn our seven-county consortium into a 13 to 14-county, basically taking the local decision-making and control from the Southwestern Workforce Board. So the good thing about that, some of the reasonings for realignment is there's multiple one-county boards in our state. Some of those are located in some of the larger metropolitan areas. Other boards are not aligned with our council of governments, which our Southwestern Commission is a council of government. There are 16 across the state. So the good thing for us, we are aligned with our council of government, we are aligned with our economic zone, and our board on March 1st, at our board meeting adopted a resolution indicating that we would not agree with any changes to our seven-county board, and that we wanted to remain within those boundaries, and we approved that on the, by vote. And so what I'm here asking today is that Macon County Commissioners recognize that our adoption of that resolution, that we stay within the seven-county workforce board region, aligned with our council of government, aligned with our economic zone. Does anyone have any questions?
Russ, you got anything you want to add to that?
I think David did a great job. I mean, as he said, I mean, we're aligned with community colleges, we're aligned with our economic development areas. There is no, there's just no reason to go to a 13-county region.
This is something that the board needs to know and the public needs to know, that of all the councils of government across the state, we are considered the, one of the strongest, if not the strongest, across the state. And we just don't, it's like David, and we need to reiterate, we just don't think we need, I mean, if those other counties need to be aligned with somebody, and these counties are not real close to us. So we don't see much in common when it comes to workforce development with those counties. I mean, we realize our workforce is going to come from our community college and our high schools. And by the way, the chief elected official of the Southwestern Development Board is the gentleman to my right, Mr. Gary Shields. And Mr. Shields, you might want to speak to that, too.
David and Russ, we met on December 17th, 2021, talked about the situation here. The chief elected officials in North Carolina are kind of identified within themselves as official of each one of these workforces. And we agreed at that time, this is not a luxury for us, that we need to keep with our seven counties and what the structure will have. Now, if some counties choose to go by themselves, that's fine, but we want our Haywood West to stay as a Southwestern Workforce Development Board.
Yes, sir.
And we've made that decision through a board, a vote, and we'd like for the Macon County Commissioners to do the same, to approve this.
And I did put that resolution in front of some of you there, and there is a line at the bottom that is asking Macon County to recognize in this resolution that our board has adopted. I do have one other housekeeping item that I'd like to bring before the board, too. On 2015, when the federal government authorized the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, that established our seven-county consortium. When reviewing our consortium agreement, there was one item that we wanted to clear up and make sure that how we establish a chief elected official and the progression that that goes in, that it's clearly defined, and it wasn't in our original agreement. And currently, right now, Commissioner Shields is serving as our chief elected official. With this updated, it would have, allow every county in our region to serve in that position on a two-year term. That would not come into play until June of, June 30th of 2023, when it would move over to Graham County. And that sets a precedent and a progression between all seven counties, that they each get to have a time as their chief elected official.
What you find in the Southwest Commission, it's all municipalities and boards of county commissioners, and they all are very well represented. What you find is very, it's very nonpartisan. You know, for us seven counties, when there's something coming for the council of government, it benefits where we live, from Haywood West, and especially from Jackson West, we'll just be honest here. Haywood's population has grown to the point, it's almost the same as the other six counties. So we need all the help we can get, and it's very important that we pull on the, pull in the same direction for the six far west counties. And I think we pretty much do so when it comes to items that affect us. And this could have an impact even on our funding for workforce development. So I, that's, that's the only comment I have, Dave.
Well, the housekeeping, a signature from the Chair would support that. I already have a signature from Haywood County and Jackson County. I'll be going to all the commission meetings for that signature.
So with that, gentlemen, I would be glad to read the resolution that was passed by the entire board of the Southwest Commission. But I'd like to make a motion that we, that this board adopt the resolution stating that we would like to remain as a seven-county workforce area and not to be expanded into other counties for numerous reasons. I'm going to put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion?
I would like to ask, what's the primary focus of this group?
Well, we're based off, we're funded by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That is allocated to the state of North Carolina, and that funding's allocated to the, currently, the 23 workforce boards. We have contractors who run our programs. We're helping folks, paying for their school, paying for anybody that's, that might have been laid off or dislocated. We can help them to retrain, to get back into the workforce. We do work with businesses for train-up grants or incumbent worker grants. We're workforce issues, and that's why it's a 19-member board that has over 50% private business, also has representatives from economic development, community-based organizations. Mr. Sutton from Macon Program for Progress is on our board also. It has education, Wagner Peiser, which is our career centers, represented on that board. And so we are working with workforce issues, trying to help our employers find employees, maintain, retain employees, and also provide them with a higher-trained employee, too.
So is that through like the unemployment office, or is it through the schools?
It's, well, we do oversee our NC Works Career Centers, so they are part of who we work with. So we oversee them, and we help them with their funding and staffing. That is, it's contracted out, too, and Divisional Workforce Solutions runs our NC Works Center currently.
Can you provide a bit of scholarship money for tires and everything?
Yeah, we also, I don't know if you've heard of the Finish Line Grant, so that's another program that's run, that was kind of put together by the workforce boards and with, with our community colleges. And so an individual that's getting close to the finishing of their degree can apply for up to a thousand dollar grant for emergency needs, whether that be for their tuition books, it could be set of tires, it could be an engine or pay for a healthcare bill, because, you know, a lot of folks are getting, they spend all the time and energy to get their degree and get trained, and then they get right there and in, and one emergency will just knock them out. So that's one of the things to do. Also, there's a $10,000 grant through our train-up program that employer can apply for, or on the job training program, some of the few things that we do.
And we just feel that our kids need to get that first opportunity in the seven far west counties. And if we expand, there's a good chance that, because it changes the whole population again.
And I just, I wasn't grilling you, I just having, just trying to figure out how to.
And we are.
Engage in the people and tell the public how to.
Exactly, and we're behind the scenes a lot, at least the board itself, but we do have our, our community-facing businesses such as the NC Works, and that's really where. The job fairs and everything.
What does your staff consist of, David?
We have, the workforce board itself is a staff of four, including myself, so very small. Myself, director, I have folks that are keeping our programs running and making sure that we are, that we are, can monitor, and that we are good stewards of the funding that we get, and our business service representative. It's a liaison between businesses and the services that we have.
Thank you. Call the question, anybody in favor, is it public, say a aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, before they, before Russ gets out of here, I would like to draw your attention, if I may. There is an item on the appointments portion of the agenda. 13B, Southwestern NC Home Consortium, Board of Directors, there's one seat open on that board, which we'll be recommending. I will be recommending our Housing Director, Mr. John Fay, to serve on that board. That has also ran through the Southwestern Commission. So if Russ is here, Mr. Chairman, while he's here, I would like to make the most of his time and let him answer our questions and provide a brief explanation of the Housing Consortium Board. If we may.
Sure.
And as I was sitting there listening, somebody pulled me aside and said they went through the WIOA program in '93 to learn how to grade lumber, and ended up being employed from that, so it's kind of cool when you see it come full circle and people take advantage. Again, I'm Russ Harris, Executive Director of the Southwestern Commission. And as Mr. Rowland mentioned, we are looking for an appointment from Macon County for the Southwestern NC Home Consortium. These are funds that generally are eligible to deal with housing issues in urban areas. Real areas are not generally eligible for these funds unless we can get the, get the population by getting several counties to band together and form a consortium so that we're eligible to get an allocation, which is what we were able to do coming on two years ago now. We were able to go around to the counties. Macon County is a member of that consortium. At this point, all seven counties in the West are members of the consortium. And then, once we can get a board seated, we can start to have projects come forward to address housing in the region, and then that board will vote on which projects go forward. That money can go to purchasing property, down payment assistance, rental vouchers, construction, anything that kind of fits into that housing, you know, that housing category. And we, you know, we are short of workforce housing. It's every region, every county we go to in the region right now. Housing and broadband are the two things we hear, so this is one way we can start to address that housing issue.
Your recommendation is John?
Yes, Mr. John Fay of our Housing Office. He's in tune with the housing issues and kind of what's going on here in Macon County, and I think that will be an excellent, he'll do us an excellent job.
I agree. We get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Thank you, Russ.
While Russ is there, I'd most say thank you for the broadband work he does on Macon County.
Absolutely.
He's on our community, and he's the regional person. Appreciate what you do and support us.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thanks, Russ.
You sing, Dave.
Thank you. All right, discussion regarding environmental health staffing issues. Commissioner Higgin?
Kathy, come on up. I know Ronnie Bill is aware of this, but here in Macon County, see some realtors in here, and everything hinges on septic system permits. Isn't that amazing? And I know Ronnie ran into a little issue with his, couldn't get one, but John and Charles. And your real. Right here is environmental health, as far as on-site wastewater goes in Macon County. Tanner Staney's resigned to take another position in the private sector. But these two guys right here do all the septic permits, septic complaints, on-site wastewater problems in Macon County. And how many, how many applications roughly, Charles, you got on file right now?
About 60 through the month of March, so.
60, that's 60 potential real estate deals, or 60 potential housing starts, or it's 60 potential hits to our economy, our local economy. And as much rain as we've had, they don't work in the rain, none of us do. I mean, these, you know, when you're waiting six, eight, 10, 12 weeks to get a permit, a lot of people say that's, that's, that's good. To me, two days is too long. I don't, at my age, you don't want to wait. So I just wanted to get everybody, and there's some realtors, Evan and Teresa back there. They rely a lot on these, every piece of property you sell. Someday, you got to reveal whether it's got a septic permit or a septic system. And it's just, it's about out of control. We're trying to hire new people. We've had Jessica, who's HR with the Health Department, and Tammy's back there as HR with the county, and they've been bombarding and thank y'all for what you're doing. You're getting word out there, just not catching any fish. And one of the reasons we're not, a requirement, when I worked there 35 years ago, ago, I had to have a bachelor's degree with 30 hours of science to qualify to be an environmental health specialist. See, that was 35 years ago. The state's just neglected to change any of that. And now, people are getting degrees in, what, international gender studies or something. They don't have 30 hours of science. So, I would like to maybe form a little committee, and I despise committees, but take a couple of these people. We've got to hit the state, and I've got a list of congressmen, senators, R S Board, that would be willing to assist us to petition to change these requirements. We all know 15 hours of science. And I think we had some ap, potential applicants with a, with a, with a four-year degree and, what, 15 to 20 hours of science, Jessica?
It was 19 hours. They didn't qualify because they didn't have the 30 hours.
Now, we could hire them, but they'd have to say, would require them to go back to college to get 11 hours of credit. Am I right?
Well, we couldn't hire them without, without the 30 hours. We can't even hire them.
So, nobody's going, after you got your bachelor's degree, you're not going back to school or...
Right.
For 11 hours. That's a, you know. Anyway, we've got to pressure the state, and I will work with our attorney here to draft us a letter and let him, him, Charles, John, Kathy, Jessica, whomever, if we could make one day, today's Tuesday, later this week, or the first, first part of next week, and rather than hash it out in public session, I just want to let the realtors know, and certainly the contractors, the septic system installers, this is affecting our company. I don't want to see us become another pigeon-porch, but we all know that construction, there's, well, right here's four guys that depend on it. And we're not doing this for us. I think it's beneficial to the county. We need to get, we need to get some staff. Charles could have retired. He been, what, 32, 34 years?
Almost 30.
30?
Almost 30.
And he could go home, and we've threatened him if he does. We're, he won't be on ever service again. John, and these guys, if you don't know what these guys do, they go out there and they grind holes in the ground all day. Tires your shoulders up, your rotator cuffs. And there's just some suggestions that we could come up with, would make their life easier. They get caught up with commercial applications, designing campgrounds or small RV parks, and they shouldn't be doing that. So, we need to delineate what we can push out into the private sector, and then what we could do to make property evaluations easier by maybe requiring test pits. Some counties require test pits, get a test pit. These guys go out, they don't have to turn that over. You cannot turn an over for 30 years. Right, I mean, you can.
But your shoulder can. You'll have to get a replacement.
Four foot deep in red clay in July.
Yeah.
I've done it. It ain't easy. And it'll, it'll tear you up. So, there's just some ideas that me and some other people have come up with, and we would like to work with in this committee, and then bring something back to the full board in a month or so and see if we can, I mean...
We, we've done a few things, and we've talked with Board of Health about some of our ideas. Digging pits, requiring pits is what, is an idea to help, even if it's temporarily while we're this short and we're, we're needing to speed the process up. We've met with the Realtor board, the realtors had a meeting. We went to that meeting and talked about the need of having the sites ready so that they don't waste a trip when they're going out, that it's all, everything's prepared and how important that is, and that, you know, we're going to have to start implementing some stiff, like, they go to the back of the line if they're not ready because we, we can't afford to waste one minute of their time. And it's a drive anywhere they go. So, we're looking at some things that we can do and I, and...
We'll bring that to the committee. Teresa Marie, she sits on the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Has for, what, 30 years?
It's like it.
How many realtors are in the room? Evan?
Everybody in town?
Two. Yeah. Can you give us some insight how this, how this program, environmental health, has aided or hampered your, your real estate businesses or chime in if you want to? This has got to be a group think approach. I've never met a hairline shy.
I mean, that land sale has been a long time, it really exists or almost. They just, but now with the low residential opportunities, people are buying more land. And buyers do want to know that they can get a septic on the property. But yes, they don't, they typically want to wait eight weeks to find that out. So, it does make our job a lot more difficult to, when we say that, they don't really understand the delay. Some people who can hear have never been on the septic system. So, it's, it's kind of foreign to them and they don't know all the steps you have to go through to get one. And when your buyer wants to be the property that hasn't been surveyed in 20 years, or there's no survey recorded anywhere, it makes it difficult to find pans and determine what they would like to have at this point. I think, I mean, they've always worked with us in the past, and I know they've made multiple trips when they probably shouldn't have, but it wasn't during a critical period like we have now where their staffing is still diminished and they don't have the time. But...
And there's also finals. We've got, you know, they're doing a lot of other things besides just that site visit.
Yeah, I guess that's the important thing to, it's not just new applications. We spend a lot of, a lot of time on complaint issues. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, for helping us on a few recently. Also, we do final inspections and then clear everything that comes through the building office side on a daily basis, too. When they're up for a final, we have to clear them out on, on our side as well. So, those are, we, we try to prioritize things, obviously.
For the public, it only works. So, it's on a computer. And if anything, that you got to have the whole list of things done before you can pull a building permit.
Correct.
And hit a red flag that. I went to data to look, see how many red flags there are. There are lots. Most of them are from the Health Department. That's what's preventing them from getting a building permit. And so, and Paul's exactly right. It is, it's an economic engine here. There's no doubt about it.
And there's two of them.
One time, we discussed about having people from other counties. Have you checked with other counties as if they're having this problem or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's everywhere. Statewide.
It's actually a statewide problem.
There's some counties six weeks behind.
What about the seven far west counties? Have you checked with those?
Yeah. Well, I mean, all, most of, Jackson's doing rather well, but most of the other seven counties.
Jackson is not behind at all.
Yeah.
Clay or Bryson City, we had two contract workers from Bryson City.
Three, three from Swain and...
I mean, from Swain. Now, they're, they're stopped doing contract work because they're six, eight weeks behind. So, we're down to one contract worker. If, is Travis still working?
Yes, yes.
What about Saturdays?
I mean, they've got approval for overtime work. So, anytime, but you're talking about two people.
Have you contacted these boys about working on Saturday, like from Jackson County?
Oh, they do.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, that's their own.
From Jackson County?
Yes, Travis has been working.
Travis one teeth. He's the only one.
What about Haywood County?
I've got a, I've got a call in to one, but...
I have two.
They, they, they got to get clearance from above because they're not going...
There's insurance questions, and I think we battled that once before about worthless comp and...
But we can get that covered. I mean, that's...
They've got it.
We've got the process for contracting with other environmental health specialists down. We know how, you know, we've got all the paperwork to cover all that. That's been through the county attorney.
And what Paul's talking about, the, the most powerful group that you can have is the Health Directors Association. That is, if you get them...
They're all talking about this. It's their number one thing. I mean, it's...
Well, they should have a resolution in front of us. Who's the president of the association?
Scott Harrelson just took over as the, the lead for the Health Directors.
I heard you key.
Soon as he gets drafted, we'll bring one.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about from the, from the Health Directors.
And they're, they're talking with the state. I mean, and, but a lot of their ideas, this is what they gave me for their ideas. I mean, they're long-term, they're long-term things that...
Nothing that'll help us in the next year.
Not, not in the next month or two.
Can you say the state?
We've done the top line.
The state is, we don't make the laws, the legis, we're, we're an arm of the legislature.
Mr. Higginson, you might want to look into the educational arena like Dr. Baldwin. In education, you run into the same thing here. When a teacher may come in, they're out of field in the certification, but they, they have a year, two years. They can come in on a probationary type thing. Then, within that timeframe, they are to get their certification at 30 hours or 15, whatever they're lacking, get that done. If they, if that process can be used in there, you could, seem like you could use the same process.
So, every candidate that we have looked at recently would come in as a trainee.
Okay.
They're not already authorized in an onsite wastewater. It'll be a year before they can actually issue a permit, between the time they start as a trainee to when they can draw their first permit. That's how long it's been taking to get somebody trained. And that's every single person that can...
And then, listen to this, and Paul knows more of that probably than you right here. This is a whole lot more restrictive than even a building inspector.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no, I mean, I don't know of anything, even an EMS worker. I don't know of anything in the county that, that has this, that, I mean, who, with a bachelor's degree?
And so, it's... And go to work for what the county's offering? The nurses.
Any of these boys could go to work. You can go to work somewhere tomorrow, make more money.
Well, Travis, I mean, Tanner's...
A lot of stress.
That's where he's going. He's making more money.
Which is why our last guy, because he doubled his salary to work for the private side.
Yeah. Double his salary.
Yeah.
Well, it's all about, you got to, you got to feed the family, you know?
Now, there's a move down in Raleigh to privatize this whole program. That's been a discussion for years. Only problem with that, there's nobody in the private sector to take it.
There's not enough of private industry to do this as well.
These guys are rare. Environment, registered environmental health specialist in North Carolina is a, is a, it's a great title to have. And that's a strong lobby, too. They don't want to weaken down the requirements for that. So, there's some things, but that's what we need to address in Raleigh. And Jessica, do you have anything to say?
I'm just like with what you were saying about with the coming in and the process, it's, it takes, with the 30 science hours, that's someone coming in as a trainee. If they don't have, you know, the certifications and everything, even with the 30 hours in science, they're coming in as a trainee. So, I mean, it, it's, it's really difficult to, to get people to qualify to even come in as a trainee.
Listen, it's numbers today. If, if Charles had five under his direction today, he would probably, he would probably, with five workers, Charles, he'd probably still take you four to five weeks with, if he had five today.
Well...
So, spring's cunning. So, there, you know how the final inspections are. There's going to be systems put in every day somewhere between Topten and Highlands. One of these guys has got to go to that. If he's lucky, one guy can do it all. That leaves one person in...
Can you do them, Kathy?
I'm about ready to do them.
But you've got that education.
Yeah.
Doesn't have the certification.
No, I have the science. I think I might have to go to the C I T training. You'd be a trainee.
It's a strict process. We may need to summarize his contacts down there. But anyway, anybody else got anything? Just, I just want you to know that we're go, we're working on this.
And there's some ideas, and I'm hoping that we can, you know, we're doing everything we can. We're, we're trying to make the application as clear so that people that are new to this process understand, they have to have everything ready before we get out there. And we're looking at, like, possible internship programs and, and different things.
I talked to Russ, the guy just was here, Russ Harris.
Yeah, I was thinking that the same. I was like, hmm, I wonder if I can give him a project.
You need to have a conflag with him.
Yeah.
Well, would this board approve if we choose five, six, seven people to leave?
Can be a ten.
One of the real, there's only two realtors interested. One of you two turkeys back, I mean, one of you two realtors back there. Evan or, Evan, you gang?
Evan, can you stop counting your money long enough to do that?
Yeah, or skip all those vacations. Evan, who else? We need an environmental health specialist.
I hate to even take their time. I don't want to take their time. If I need them, then I'll pull them in. Because they've got to be in.
Okay. You want to do?
I'll gladly do. I have a lot of opinions. Yeah, I must agree, yeah.
Do you have an installer, Paul? You'll be the liaison, so...
I'll pick an installer. Who would you suggest? Danny Litter?
Jeff Parrish.
Jeff Parrish?
Any of them, any, any of those guys.
I know Nick Jeff Parrish, that's the...
Jeff Parrish, you get one? Counsel?
Yeah. And truly, if Russ or, what was the other gentleman's name? Dave?
I'm sorry?
The, the workforce development.
David Garrett.
We could run stuff by him and see if they've got any ideas.
And we have all that, their contact information, Kathy, so...
How do we, how do we communicate to where we're going to make, when?
I will, I will get in touch with everybody.
Have you got Evan's?
I will get it. I've seen a billboard.
Oh, yeah. Billboard on every road, yeah.
The only question I have is, during this process with our new website that we've got with our county, we, as realtors, every transaction we do depends on a permit of septic of some kind, of some type. If we could get some temporary help to help upload those permits, existing permits, onto those parcels, and I understand that's going to be an influx of work in the beginning to get that done, but in the long term, it would help us, you know, take the stress off of requesting a permit for every property we come across, because then on our GIS site, we can look to see if it had a permit. So, as far as a small, a small temporary fix, a bigger solution would be, you know, to, to put some temporary labor on just its data input. And there's not going to have to be a bachelor in science degree for that.
Yeah, that would, that's an IT.
That would really help us take the load off of y'all. So, that, that's one thing that I see that we both could work together on and do.
Yeah. That would involve Andy. I mean, it...
We appreciate you boys and what you do every day. I mean, we all, we all write and complain over that. So, that's just what we have to do. And it, it's just the way it is.
If we can do this on a day to day, we'll certainly have one or two of these guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you'll, you'll contact the people we've chosen here. Ronnie, you want to sit on it or?
No. My plate is full.
We'll do it.
Play it every...
We'll have something for next month.
All right, guys. Thank y'all. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
So, we've identified the problem. We just need to...
Thank you, Paul.
Get options. Thank y'all. It didn't mean to take that long, but just important.
All right. Mr. Higginson, you're still up. Discussion regarding safety concerns and condition and now, how are you in that?
Oh, we've got that taken care of through Derek and Mike Cope, and really just about the library. When can we start?
I think the DOT is finishing up their project over there. Recently had a discussion with the DOT about that project. Now, we have it, there, it is, we have a placeholder, if you remember, through the C I P process. We budgeted $350,000 for the renovations to that project, which is a rough estimate at this time. As we begin moving forward, though, we're, we've met with the community building and the library over there. They're both amicable to dividing that building in half and, and each taking half. So, really what we're waiting on is, you know, we could start that project in the new budget coming up for fiscal year '23. That's when it's slated on the C I P. If that, if the board in the adoption of the budget chooses, it continues to put that, that as a priority, then it will take place. It's budgeted for next fiscal year.
Mr. Manager and Commissioner Higginson, let me give you a report from the library board. Karen Wallace is here. And at the last library board meeting, I think it was last Tuesday, we could go today, we did meet along with some members from the Nana Hala Community Club. I think you had went over and had a meeting with them. And it's a recommendation of not only the, the library board, but I think it's a great idea. I, I've never known us to tackle a building that is in this shape to make it a library who's going to be spending 90% of the time in that building. The community will be spending maybe 10%, the library be there every day. Karen, you can, Karen, if you'll come forward just a second. What I'd like to recommend in behalf, behalf of the, the library board is that Karen does have contact with somebody that all they do is specialize in, in space needs and, and libraries. And so, Karen, if you'd like to speak to that, I think we should at least get a quote from him. As far as I know, Mr., we've never had an engineer look at this building. We've never had a, certainly an architect has never looked at it.
Well, we had, and, you know, rest his soul, Mr. Tom Ritter looked at it and did some drawings for us one time, and that is all we have. But now, Jack, that was just a drawing of the existing building. That was no renovation. Is that right? That's just, so we don't have any design work.
So, no design work, no engineering. We don't know...
Right.
What, if it's even got a footprint. We don't even, we don't know nothing about that building. So, what, Jack, except what Jack's looked at, and that, and that's only visual, right, Jack?
That's only visual. We, we did have Tom's original drawings of the building, and he passed all the co-inspections. So, that's not all we have.
So, Karen, what, how much, do you have any idea what in, what the architect, would he have to come over and, and give? So Karen, what, how much, do you have any idea what in, what the architect, would he have to come over and, and give a surprise, or?
So I've mentioned a few times, there's an architect that we've worked with, um, on our Marianna Black Library in Bryson City. The architect is from Asheville, his name is Keith Hargrove. He's done multiple library projects, um, over the years. He's done a lot in Boncomb County, Madison County, now in Swain County as well. Um, I've not approached him about this project because I don't have the authority to do that, but I'm sure that he would consider it. I don't know what his schedule looks like, so, um, I really don't have, uh, any additional information other than he's had considerable experience doing library renovation and library construction. So works with engineers to, um, develop plans for, we're working on a renovation project now in Swain County.
So you've got his always contact.
I do, yes.
So with that, if, if Paul is really the, he's the liaison for that, that district, but I'm the liaison at the library, so would we see any problem, Mr. Manager, at least contacting him and just seeing where, I mean, if it's going to be, if it's going to be $150,000, we're not interested. But if it's going to be something reasonable, I think it'd be a good investment.
Jack, do we have a price set out with anybody? If we get into Tom, but maybe in that was.
That was, yeah. I mean.
What's wrong with getting a price?
If we hire an architect that's under 50K, if the fee's under 50K, y'all could do.
It's got to be way under 50K.
If it's over 50K, we have to do requests for qualifications.
They're smaller of a building. It'd be under 50K.
You might be surprised.
You'd hope so.
You might be surprised nowadays.
But I think it'd be worth, we've never done a, in renovation like this without an architect or an engineer involved. So, and the least thing we can do if we're going to spend this much taxpayer dollars on a project, it at least needs to have some, something to hang our hat on if it goes, blows up, so. There's nothing wrong with getting a price, aren't there? I mean, at least contacting.
As long as it comes out of the library budget.
No, it ain't going to come out of the library.
I don't.
Come out of Paul's playhouse over there.
I mean, we'll water this thing to death, we have. What are they going to tell us? You got about, what, a 20 by 4, 20 by 30 foot room in there? 30 by 30?
Yeah, the, the total square footage is 2,400 square feet.
So y'all are going to probably wind up with 12 or 1,000 square feet.
So the community at large is interested in having space available, um, for larger programs, and then the building is not really divided quite in half. So I think the library will actually end up with a slightly larger space, in part because the restrooms are going to be on the community side.
So you're taking the fireplace side.
Correct.
So, I mean, you got to, there's two handicap bathrooms that got to be in place with all the requirements of handicap approved. There's just a lot more to it than.
Jack could probably figure that out. As long as they're hooked to the septic tank though, you can figure it out of making handicap access.
Be hard to get a permit. So I, I'm just saying get a price for, what do you think, Mr. Manager? Have you, do you know of any other project we've done without at least having some architect or somebody look at it and then come up with ideas? Especially for a library, I mean, that's a whole different ballgame.
I'm totally good, I will work, whatever the pleasure of the board is, we can certainly get us, get a price if that, if you all are in agreement to that, we can get a price for it.
I don't think that'll hold us up if he, if he's available, and if it's a decent price. Don't you, wouldn't you feel more, I know the library board, I speak on behalf of them and the community, and the community association over there, so.
I, I think having a smaller space, um, we want to be sure that we maximize that space to its best, um, usage. And there've been a lot of suggestions from the community directly to the library and through the community club and just in conversations with people who live in that community. And we want to be sure what, how we renovate that building best serves the people who are there. When you've got limited space, you want to make sure you're using that space to the best advantage. And, um, you know, I've been through a few building projects myself, but, um, depending on when this starts, I may or may not be part of that project, so, um, so I'm retiring at the end of the year.
Well, we're going to stall it to the last of that care, so, yeah.
Well.
How big is your current, where you keep your books and your computers at the double wide down there?
So the, the total square footage for that building is 1,800 square feet. Those two rooms that have the computers and the collection are probably about 800 square feet. There's a large hallway there, that's a lot of sp, less space, um, and then the community room, that is over the jurisdiction of the library.
So you're going to break it even about it, how that's library in the halls?
Yeah, you know, we, we use the community room for library programs as well as community programs, and I think that the space that is available in the new building will be used for community projects. The library will use that space as well.
Absolutely, sure. I just can't, I mean, it's pretty self, I mean, the.
Well, I don't think it'd be, it would delay if we're going to wait until the July budget anyway, so I don't see no reason why we couldn't at least get a quote from them. I think it was, I think as a board member and, and representing the library, the liaison of the library, Karen, you can, you can express their thoughts too.
Yeah, the library board would feel much more comfortable, I think, having an architect at least, um, you know, review the building, give recommendations, um, you know, look at some of the engineering involved. Just again, to maximize the space to the best advantage. One of the things that has been, um, with the pandemic, I, I think there's been a huge surge in the use of public libraries for people to, um, to study, um, to attend classes through Zoom meetings. Well, you can't really do a Zoom meeting out in the middle of the library. You've got to have a separate room so that you've got some privacy, whether it's for telehealth, whether it's for work, whether it's for your studying a class at school. And we're hopeful that maybe a small room can be incorporated into this building to be able to fulfill that. At the main library here, we have eight rooms that people use continuously for those kinds of uses with, um, meetings that involve some level of privacy and confidentiality. And it would be a shame not to look at the building with something like that in mind to be able to incorporate that for the people who live out there.
We talked about folding petitions, there's a lot of things that, that that can be done, but also the way I understand the, the internet, that's still up in the air too.
Derek had mentioned at the last meeting we had out at the building that Balsam West, I think, has said that.
There is an option, we're just, uh, we're in discussions right now to fine tune that option and get that option as a.
Didn't that come under charter area?
There is, there is, it does, it, with the ARDOF funding. I think that is covered by the, the charter area, but that again is another thing that we've been looking into, especially with the broadband committee, and Nana Hala still is a priority. The broadband committee has for getting internet to that area is and continues to be a priority.
Charter, without charter communications now, they're, they're, they're driving the ship there.
But there is a way that we can get Balsam West in there should things fall into place, hopefully, or maybe even another provider might be interested. It just, there's a lot of options out there and we're going through all of them.
So I do have to say that that library would need to be part of our network for Fontana Regional Library, so we would have to coordinate with our IT.
Yes, we discussed that, yes.
I mean, it's, so the construction money is not in, any of that money is not in this current budget?
It is not, we've always discussed it as we're going to pay for this renovation project out of fund balance. We've never taken the step to appropriate the funding in the budget, but we did have that on the slate for the CIP to occur in fiscal year '23.
Well, I'm not opposed to the fund balance approach, but now we've dragged this thing out. I know Ronnie, I think he was on, he said they'd been looking for 14 years for a library over there, and we don't want, we don't.
No, not really, we've been, we always thought we'd put it where it needs to be up our school, so.
So I see this as another stall tactic, we stall and stall and stall. So if you want to get the library, the architect to look at it, give them a very short period of time to do it. Within a month or two, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with an Nana Hala Community Club and let the library go wherever they want to go.
The community club is one suggesting this.
People from, people from the community club have suggested it.
Yeah, and.
The president for sure.
Uh, vice president.
Ed Trask.
Vice president.
Ed Trask, he's on the community, uh.
Correct.
He's the vice president.
Sharon Crosby, Peggy Ellison.
And the community club, yeah. So, that's one out of about 40 of those meetings over the night over there, they're ready to go.
We've had several of them that is speaking to us.
Well, let's go to the, let's go to that level, uh, community meeting the first Monday in, uh, May. Let's all go over there and talk to them, you've been there before.
I've been there many times, and I'm, I, I feel confident in saying that they, the members of the community, as, as is true for the members of the library board and library staff, want to just make sure that the project is approached with the best advantage to use the space.
And I think we've been doing that for over a year.
Well, we haven't really talked about what exactly will be included in that space. So, uh, design wise for that, so.
It won't be similar to Franklin or Highlands, the Hudson, I mean.
Uh, no, you know, not at 2,400 square feet, but can we incorporate some of the most popular services and amenities that those libraries have? That's, that our goal is to try to make it the best thing that we can for the people who live there.
I'd envision taking what you have, dressing it up, painting it, putting it, you know, but, uh, we'll drag it out for another month or two, but at some point, uh, I'd go to those meetings.
We'll not appropriate money till July, then we'll drag it out.
We've got $32 million sitting in fund balance, Ronnie.
Except not all of it's ours.
Uh, yeah, it is, 37 is undesignated, 37 is fund balance, 32 is undesignated.
It's already appropriated.
The, the money's there, and those people have waited a long time for improvements over there, and we're just, I think we're as leaders are just, just keep dragging the cart down the road.
But we're listening to the library board who represents the county on the library, right? Is that not over listening to?
Uh, the library board and the community club and members of the community have all expressed an interest in the project, and our goal from the library side is simply to make sure that we approach the project productively.
Problem with that.
And.
It'll be the same thing in two months if we're not careful, we're going to rehash it again. So get your sky, whoever he is, and get him to come over and give us a proposal. We don't want to wait too much for a proposal. I mean, that thing.
I can contact him if I've got permission to do that, I, I don't have access to his schedule, so.
Yeah, if you'll send me his contact information, I'll, I'll be happy to contact him tomorrow.
And we're not spending any money on this, we, I mean.
No money involved.
No money involved.
We'll get a price.
But every day we'll wait, you're going to lick that trailer, one next to is writing it down. Have you seen that?
Uh, of course, yes, of course.
And when you take the siding off of your library, it's going to be the same thing, it's going to be rotten. It's leaking, it's awful, it's pathetic.
I believe we've expressed that to the board on numerous occasions.
Absolutely.
So, yes, I am very familiar with it.
And we're not going to wait forever to do it.
That's good.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. All right, proposed changes to animal control ordinance, Kathy? Mr. Chairman, as, uh, as Kathy and Jimmy come up, I would just like to, uh, bring us back up in speed. As Ms. Dogen spoke, uh, to begin the meeting, she mentioned this is a process. Changes to an ordinance, especially a regulatory ordinance such as this one, is a process. And the first step in that process was the health board was tasked with going through this ordinance by this board and recommending any changes. They have done that, they've approved the changes, uh, and they're bringing them before you to present to you tonight. Now, this will be the first time this board receives these changes. So, you know, again, this is a very, uh, this board takes this very seriously when we're looking at our ordinances and reviewing the ordinances. The attorney and I have not reviewed these changes at this time and will not do so until directed by the board after you've looked at these changes and deemed which ones you feel are necessary, which ones are needed. So we had the health department, uh, break them out, and they've done an excellent job into a database, if you will, or a spreadsheet here that's included in your agenda packet, and rather than incorporating them into the ordinance and then having a red line ordinance with a bunch of mark-throughs through it, here the changes are summarized. And as you look through this document, you'll notice there are 13 changes on here. They list the proposed change, the details of that change, the reason the health department will be recommend, the health board is recommending this change, and the source that they take, that had, that they have taken their reasoning from. Also, you'll see the column on the far right is the services were requested by, uh, I know that you had it and went to great lengths to involve community participation in the health board meetings at which these changes were discussed. So that's just kind of a 100,000-foot view, Mr. Chairman, again, and as we discussed when Ms. Dogen was here, before any action is taken on this, this is still a lengthy process where the, the board has to digest this information and have discussions. And there is a public hearing that must be held before these could ever go into effect. So with that being said, thank you all for being here tonight, thank you for doing an excellent job putting this together, board jerky.
All right, well, thank you. Like, uh, Mr. Roland said, we've been working on this for several months, trying to take in all kinds of, uh, information. We reviewed all the animal control ordinances from the far west and kind of looked through them and tried to pick, you know, the parts that I thought were applicable to us. They're also listed on this spreadsheet in priority of what we feel, you know, as, uh, would be the, the most important ones. And I'll just hit the highlights because I know time's an essence. But, uh, the first one is, uh, an update to the civil penalties. Currently, the, the way it's set up, it's a $25 citation for a first offense, and then it's $50 citation. There's, uh, and then it's $50 citation afterwards. The problem with that current system is it's not really a deterrent or an incentive for people to fix the issue. There, you know, is it any civil penalty, it's hard to enforce. What I would propose, or what the board would propose, would be a multi-tiered type of penalty based on the level of the infraction, because currently, you know, a nuisance complaint or an animal welfare issue are, are leveled on the same field. And then what we would propose is having, based on the offense and the number of times that it happens, it would escalate and increase, and then when it reaches a certain threshold, maybe turn it over to debt settlement or something like that. Again, the goal is not to collect the money, the goal is to get the problems fixed. And, uh, what we're seeing basically is, you know, the good citizens fix the problems right away, and the one, and some of them that realize very quickly that there's not a lot of teeth to the ordinance as far as enforcement, the problem just continues. And that's very frustrating for us, it's very frustrating to the citizens who have the complaints and having to deal with that. The next issues or both, or recommendations are mainly updates to definitions. North Carolina, uh, basically says animals need to have adequate food, water, and shelter, but they don't go much further than that in defining what is adequate food, water, and shelter. So what we did, have reviewed a whole bunch of ordinances and tried to pick out the parts that help makes that clearer and easier to understand, and also makes it easier for our officers to enforce, and it's not so much open to interpretation. So these were basically taken from a lot of the other ones just to make it more clear, you know. What my, what I consider to be adequate food, water, and shelter may be different than yours or different than anybody else's. So I think clarification on that will just make it a lot easier. Uh, another one is just a very small thing, definition of domestic animals, just add ferrets, because ferrets are considered a domestic animal and are required by law to have a rabies vaccination, and that's currently not in our court, or ordinance, so that's just an easy fix. Add a definition of proof of ownership. Uh, when people come to reclaim their animals, we require a photograph or vet record or something to prove that, you know, it's actually your animal. Because, you know, we'll post on the website certain dogs that are missing or stray, and someone will see it and go, well, that's a dog that I like. And, you know, and we have a responsibility of the owner to make sure that we don't give the animal to someone else. So I'd like to add that into the ordinance if we could. Another one is, uh, what's considered proper restraint, and that's just more definition. You know, I don't want to get into tether laws and all that, but, you know, what's a considered adequate length of a, of a tether? Is it six feet, is it 10 feet? And I think that's something we need to, to clarify. Also expand across, uh, what's public nuisance, put that more specific in the ordinance. We've had a couple. We've had a couple complaints that we've taken to the district attorney's office that we thought were pretty clear-cut, but the ordinance wasn't specific enough, so we had to go back and weren't able to prosecute these cases like we should have been able to. So I think just clarifying that will just make it easier. Another big one, and this is something that we run into all the time, is I'd like to propose that we have a voluntary, let me emphasize voluntary, livestock registry. So anyone who has cattle or horses or any kind of livestock, just register with us and let us know. The number of calls we get in the middle of the night for cows in the road or goats in the road all over the county is unbelievable. And it just makes it so much easier if we can look and go, well, okay, this, you know, this is probably one of Paul's animals, let us call Paul and see if he's missing something and we can work with it. It's kind of hard to track down something at two o'clock in the morning and we have a responsibility to get that cow out of the road so it doesn't create a public hazard in an accident. So I think that would just make it so much simpler and most farmers are, I mean, they're very grateful. I mean, a lot of times we call them and the Ag Center's been really good with working with it, but to formalize that, I think would just make it so much simpler and safer. One proposal is to reduce the whole time on stray animals from ten days to seven days, okay? Currently, North Carolina law requires seventy-two hours, which is three days. The current ordinance says ten days. That applies to a nice calm dog or a wild feral cat. What we'd like to do is, most people that have lost an animal will be beating on our door the next day to find it. I'd like to propose cutting it down to seven days because that will allow us to place that animal up for adoption quicker. I know that we've lost a lot of adoptions because they come, the animal's not available, it's on day eight or day nine, they say, okay, I'll come back on day ten, they've gone to another shelter and adopted one. So I don't think that three-day holding period is going to make a difference as far as like if you're missing an animal and able to reclaim it, but it will help us adopt animals. And then the last one is owner surrenders, just basically putting them on a, they can't adopt for sixty days. And that would be on a case-by-case basis. We've got some animals or some people that basically come in and they just trade in animals and that's not fair to the animal or to the public, you know. And now there's different circumstances. I mean, if you have a vicious animal or something like that, of course we're going to allow you to adopt right away, but just because, you know, you're tired of this dog and you want to come get another one, you know, it's kind of, it's sad when they turn one in that day and then they want to walk through the kennel and adopt another one the next day and then you see them three months down the road and they're doing the same thing. These are just things I'd like for the board to consider. If there are any specific questions or any other details, we'd be happy to expand upon them and just, it's for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right.
Jim, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
We just got a question today. Do we have volunteers who come to the shelter and volunteer to walk the dogs?
Yes, sir, we do. We have.
They take them to the greenway and walk the dogs?
We have a great group of volunteers. They come every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays and they'll take our dogs out and they walk, they help feed, they help clean. They do take some dogs to the greenway to walk and they'll put little adoption vests on them to just kind of get the animals out and expose them to the community, but it's a wonderful group of people.
The question to be honest was who's responsible for those dogs if they should bite someone or act called dog or, you know, who, who's insurance would that be under if, if one of our dogs that we have sheltered and we have in a public area? If it's Mr. Shields or my dog and he bites Jimmy, it's our homeowner's insurance. We don't know who it would be with the county. I've asked the county attorney to look at that unless you know the answer to the question.
Is it truthful? No, I don't. I know the ones that go to the greenway are, you know, they're the good ones. They, you know, we don't take anything that poses any hazard. It is a legitimate question that I honestly do not have the answer, Mr. Bill.
We asked our attorney to sort of look into that about our insurance, make sure that our umbrella would cover that in case you never know.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Is there a reason why we skipped over the EMS building?
EMS again. Oh, I talked with Mike Coe, he's got a plan on it. And we're going to be meeting on it. Yeah, I should have mentioned that.
Sorry, we, it was mentioned, you just, you might not have heard us, but yeah, we said, sorry, no, no, it was our fault. We moved right past it because Commissioner Higginson said he had it taken care of. Thank you, sorry about that. I'm E, NCDOT update.
Okay, real quickly, I'm just going to do the twenty-two, twenty-threes, that the contract is to be let. The one is replace Bridge Two Thirty-Six, the lower prong of Burnington Creek. It's Bridge Two Thirty-Six on SR Thirteen Ninety-Six over Lower Prong, Burnington Creek. That, that will be let on ten twenty-five twenty-two. Bridge number two oh four, Walnut Creek, we all know where that's the first bridge that should come up on the creek that the sides is always knocked off of. That will be let in twenty-two, in the fall of twenty-two. The next one is the project replaces Bridge Fifty-Nine Oh Eight over Burnington Creek on SR Thirteen Eighty-Seven. That will be let, construction, that'll be let on one six, on one eleven. It has been let. So that, that has been let. The others, that's going to happen in twenty-three. Ellie J Road on the North Prong, that will be let on one ten twenty-three and replace Bridge over the Calida Creek on Crestview on Shope Road, that will be let in the, in the fall of twenty-three. Now, those in progress now as a percentage completion of what we have, of course, four forty-one, north and south over Carticay Jay Creek, that's eighty percent complete. Completion date is pending. I think all they like is the median. The three bridges, two over Teleco and one over Sugar Cove, they are just now getting started, right away has been secured, everything's ready to start. They have a completion date, that's going to take about two years to build those three bridges. Bridge number two twenty-three, that's Stamy Mountain Road over South Fork on Skeena, that is eighty-three percent complete. They basically will probably finish next month. Bridge twenty-nine over White Oak Creek in Macon County, that's, they're about halfway finished for that bridge. And the resurfacing, which we're all interested in, the resurfacing of the Weyer Road, that's all the way from the Job Corps all the way to the Buck Creek Road. That completion date, that has been let and the completion date, weather pending, is October fifteenth. So that's of all those, of course, there are all those bridges and the inconvenience that it causes the folks, but they're certainly needed and we're glad to have that many in our district, but the biggie on here is the resurfacing of Weyer Road for those of us that have to go up and down it Weyer Road. It needs it, so, so that's, that's an update. We have the sheet here if anybody would like to offer it to you.
All right, moving on to old business, consideration of change order from Echo Middle School. Jack, welcome back again.
Good evening. There's some changes I'd like to propose for the Macon Middle School. First of all, it's come along very well as far as time-wise, probably be out of the school by the middle of May. And then all we have will be the, some outside work, there's a wall in the back for security behind the dining room and new canopy and hopefully and possibly some new concrete out front. So moving along with that. These change orders, the first one, the existing vents, the, the school had foundation vents in the walls above the drop ceiling but below the roofline, which is letting cold air in.
Yeah.
That's blocking those up. The north wing power, we had to replace the panel in the north wing because we couldn't buy breakers, couldn't find breakers to replace the breakers we needed to, so we had to put a whole new panel in. That's the problem with old equipment is they don't make breakers and stuff to fix it, so they want you to buy a new one, so we had to do that. Number four and five are the north ring rated wa, rated walls, fire-rated quarters, didn't have door closures on them, they didn't have gaskets on them, so we had to buy those. The first number, the thousand dollars is labor and the second number is the material to do that. The windows commitment, the plastic laminate, that will be to replace up on the mezzanine, all that plastic they've got between the oak borders. You gentlemen approved us to refinish that wood here a while back, which we're going to wait till school's out to do that because there's going to be dust and fumes. But the laminate, Plexiglas looks pretty bad. A lot of it was cracked, it scratched all the pieces. It would make the inside of the school look complete if we did that.
What was you going to put there?
Just that Plexiglas bag.
Same product, man?
Same product, bag, the smoked Plexiglas, you know, kind of break your view a little bit of who's up there, but still lets light through. I wouldn't recommend clear for that and glass, glass, to be honest with you, is not much more expensive, but the problem is if it ever shatters, here comes the pieces down on the kids below, so I wouldn't advise that. That's the big ticket. They add temperature sensors in the freezer and cooler, that would be to give the school maintenance, they could check on their computer out at the Board of Education building to check the temperatures on those remotely. So over the holidays and weekends, they'd be alarmed, go off to those computers, which is send an email to the maintenance people if they know they've had a problem with their cooler or their freezer, which I think is a real good idea. The air handler economizer, what that is, is it differentiates between the outside temperature and the inside temperature and allows the, that equipment to either draw from the inside return air or use the outside as a return air, whichever is more economical to heat and cool. The air handler twelve is for the basement is what that is. We never had that before. And the last one is cleaning. No. And the last one is cleaning existing metal roof. If you ever drove by it or been up at the MVI, you'll see what the roof looks like. And we tested the panel by cleaning it and it comes pretty doggone clean. I got plan B, the price for painting and we're not going to have to paint it, we can clean it. So that's what that amounts for.
Thank you. Make the motion that the change order be approved as presented.
All right, motion by Commissioner Shields.
Second to.
Session by Commissioner Young. Questions?
What was the amount of the change order?
Sixty-five nine fifty-four.
Sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-four?
Yes.
But what will that leave us in?
So we'd also need a budget amendment with that motion to take it from the project contingency. Right now we have three sixty-two, one thirty-six. So we'll be right under three hundred.
Did you almost complete that, Mr. Shields? I believe you did. He just, he did it here.
All in favor, say if I will say aye.
Now, that concrete, that concrete will be lit, Jack. We go through that.
Yeah, it will. We've not got a price back on that yet. The only two big change orders that I foresee is we're going to have one to, want to do some lot of electrical work in the kitchen to be able to shut or cut off all the equipment, existing equipment, kitchen under the hood because as it is, the only thing, if the suppression system goes off, it just shuts off the new equipment and not the rest of it. So we're going to have to do some electrical work there. And then the concrete out, out front where the columns are for those, for the canopy supports, the engineer calls for a four-by-four footer that we've got to cut out in that concrete and it'd look like a patchwork quilt if we do that. So I would suggest that we just report the whole front. That will be next month.
That be it, probably?
I think so, I hope so.
It looks really good, Jack.
It's looking good. It is, it's, it's cleaning up pretty good.
So their project's on time?
Yeah, we, like I said, they'll be out of the building in the middle of May, the students will be able to move back in that west wing before school's out.
So it's on time? They ain't been nothing, that school ain't been touched, has it?
No.
I believe everything I walked through been touched, everything.
We've touched it all. And what we've got to do after school's let out is, of course, to finish the woodwork. We got some, a little bit of caulking we need to do in some places that are a little secure that we don't need to be bothering now. Let's see. Upstairs in the mezzanine, they, they put some students up there and while this is going on, we've got to tear those partitions out and replace that carpet and some ceiling tile and that'll be done in there. It looks really good and they painted the mural in there that really looks nice. If you've not seen, you need to go see it.
On time and under budget?
Yes, sir. It'll be under budget. If we don't spend all of the Lord's money, we'll be all right.
We ain't done yet.
That's right. We're about out of the woods.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. All right, I think we need to, let's call a recess for five minutes. We'll start new business.
Amount for that, the total funding amount is going to be somewhere around sixty to seventy percent of what the American Recovery Act was, those of you that may recall that. That was quite a large sum of money. We basically during that period of time, we, we had as many as five staff members, field staff members that were funded by that. I'm proposing to start with one crew member. The reason for that is, is that the, it, it provides, I think, the county a cushion that should there be any glitches or things that arise, we can carry that person now with the programs, with the programs that we have. It'll be tight, but we can do it. One of the things that we'll do, it'll increase our capacity to do these jobs. The ARPA, when the actual ARPA funds come during the summer, we'll probably have like, say sixty to seventy percent of what the American Recovery Act funds were, and that's three point five billion dollars is for the whole allotment for the country. That kind of prorated down to us, works out to where we will end up around tenfold the amount of jobs that we have annually. So that, and we're basically a four-year period to get those done. Besides that, we'll also continue to get our other weatherization annual funds. So it's going to be quite a workload. I'd like to, the reason, another reason I'm proposing this new hire is that we'll have time to get him trained and bring him up to speed because they have to, they have to be trained in order to do weatherization work. And it, it basically lets us kind of feel the waters and judge what happens as we go along. I anticipate coming before you again sometime probably during the summer when these other funds come up and ask that we hire another person and bring them on board.
John, these funds, it also covers the social security match, insurance, all the expense that employee comes out of.
The entire, the entire expense comes out of the grant funds.
You think you can find somebody for thirteen dollar and a half an hour?
Uh, well, we give it a go. It's not, it hasn't been easy in the past. I don't know that it's going to be any easier now. But we've had some people that just by hanging around the guys that we have, the staff that, that know that there's a possibility we may have some openings up. Some people have expressed some interest, some of them pretty qualified. So we'll see, we'll see where that goes. The, again, like I say, it's no cost to the county. It just, it's all picked up by grants. That's just the way we've always operated. Also, which would be important to you all, and it's important to me, is that when this, when any of our people that are staff that's hired, that's grant-funded, they're, they are told from the get-go upfront that their employment is contingent on the basis of us receiving grant funds for those positions. That being said, I've done this for fifteen years and we've never laid anybody off. And that includes going through the American Recovery Act.
Mr. Chairman, this leaves off that department. I'll just tell you that a lot of the folks don't realize, not only the demand on this, on the county hits greater than ever right now already. Me and John have this discussion and yes, they need help. I just, it was a concern of John's, we had that discussion before about finding somebody for thirteen and a half an hour. That's, that'll stay with you, but we appreciate what the housing department does, John.
Appreciate it.
And you need to give this board at least a written report of the jobs done and what was completed and how much money. It's, it's pretty amazing.
It is.
For the citizens that you've helped in this county.
I appreciate it. One of the things that we do have, just kind of addressing that point, that we've acquired, again, through grant funds, a software program, kind of trying to automate the department as much as we can. And, and part of that software is going to be the ability to provide a report to the county manager, which I'm sure he would, you know, his will, he can pass that on to you all. To give you an idea, it'll break, as soon as we get trained in it, it will break down the amount of units that we serve in various townships and also the voting districts. So you can get an idea of who's being, you know, not who's being served, but how many people are being served in your areas. And so that's what we're working towards in that area. And that's about all I got. If you have any questions, I'll be more.
Motion to approve the new crew member.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Shills. Any further questions? All in favor, seeing if I'm a saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, recommendation from the community funding pool. I presume you're the presenter to be determined tonight.
It's me. I wasn't sure if I was going to make it tonight or not.
Thank you, Karen.
Let's go to the library.
So I'm here on behalf of the community funding pool. Our committee met last month and reviewed the grant applications that we received. We received fourteen grant applications. The total requested amount was over ninety-eight thousand dollars. As you know, the county allocates seventy-five thousand towards nonprofit allocations to be spent on the recommendations of the community funding pool. So what we do is we review the applications and we have a scoring matrix that we use to be able to allocate or recommend those funds. There were two projects, two organizations that applied that we are not recommending for funding, and those were very difficult decisions for us. But because those two organizations received money directly from Macon County per their requests, we did not consider them eligible for the seventy-five thousand that is allocated to the community funding pool. And that was Kids Place and Skate Eight Two Eight. I know that both had very legitimate needs for approaching the county, but because they did get funding directly from the county, we are not recommending funding to them. And again, that was a very difficult decision for us. The one page you can see the, all the amounts requested and then what we're recommending, and the other page just tells you a little bit about the project and the different organizations that, that are requesting funding. And those range everything from, we had a three hundred dollar request up to ten thousand. And our scoring matrix goes through and makes, you know, depending on the validity of the project, how much impact we think that project is going to have, that, what segment of the community the project or the program is addressing are all factors in determining how much, what the score for that organization is. So we actually, for the very first time, I think, or maybe the second time, we're recommending more funding for some organizations than what they requested. And the reason for that is because as we read their applications and reviewed their projects, we saw a strong impact to the community and we wanted to be able to assist them in those projects. Also because there were two organizations we did not choose to fund, we were balancing out the funds that we had available from the county to allocate to these organizations. So it's seventy-five thousand. I checked my math many times because Lori caught me once in having a spreadsheet error and I said, never again is that going to happen. So, oh, well, you know, I mean, I work in enough spreadsheets that I know it happens, but I don't, I didn't want to go there. So happy to answer any questions, but our recommendations, as you can see, are before you for the twelve organizations that we will be funding or recommending for funding.
I'd just like to comment on a couple of them. One, the Making Program for Progress.
Yes.
Parents, his teachers program is wonderful.
Right.
And it's very beneficial to a lot of people. And of course, especially Liberty Project.
Yes.
Shields have been involved in and a lot of us have been involved in since its beginning. And if people don't know what that is, of course, that's, that's Gold Star Families. Are welcome there, of course, the Gold Star Families, someone that's lost a loved one in combat.
It was the first time they'd requested funding, so we were pleased to see that.
They, they've got a place upon Onion Mountain and, and there's somebody on this board paid a lot of money for building permits, for fuel, and, and so there've been a lot of contributions, but it's for a very worthy thing. Just people that might not know where that is.
How many applied for funding?
Fourteen organizations.
So I'm looking at the requested amount.
Mm-hmm.
And a substantial amount of people who received funding received well over what they asked for.
Our highest scores, we did recommend additional funding to maximize that seventy-five thousand.
But you're telling me there's two people that didn't get, get any money?
Correct.
And the others extra.
And that's because part of the arrangement with community funding pool is to allocate or to recommend allocation of funds to organizations who do not receive funds directly from the county. The two organizations that we chose not to fund were organizations that received direct distributions from Macon County. So it, and again, that was really hard for us. Kids Place, we have always funded their request, and we know that they were in a very difficult situation, but if we, where they approached the county because they really needed that funding back earlier in the pandemic. But if we make an exception for one organization that comes directly to the county, then we think we watered down the whole purpose of the community funding pool, which is to relieve all of you of fourteen different organizations coming and pitching their project to you. That's the work that we do.
Well, I don't want to be hypocritical. I just wanted to explain my position and just kind of share my position. I do think tax dollars can be spent better in other areas. I'm not saying it's not worthy the cost, but you know, if they're requesting to serve them out, just handing them free money. And I appreciate what you do. I just wanted to so much explain myself. And thank you.
Understand.
Mr. Chairman, speaking of the S K Eight Two Eight Project, where are we at on that, baby? We know we're holding a check. Did we turn it loose or?
Yeah, we received, I've spoken with Amy Owens at the town and they are moving forward with the quit my property. They're moving forward with that project. So we'll be partnering with them in that.
You see anything on bathrooms up there, or lighting, or parking lots, or?
I guess they'll, they'll be incorporating that into the project, I assume. Now, I haven't seen any plans for the project other than we were showing, the ones we were showing here at the meeting the other night, but I'm assuming the, in speaking with her, the, the town seems to have that bull by the horns, so we'll.
I didn't see no bathrooms. I didn't see no lighting. I didn't see no parking lots. I didn't see, have you seen it? Seen it?
I didn't see it that night on what we saw here, and I haven't seen anything of it.
Well, you talked to any of these others, call them over in Haywood County, see what it costs, you know, years ago.
Oh, when you talk about a bathroom facility itself, you're, I mean.
What did them cost down there to dump?
I think that was about seventy-five or.
I'd say it was about a hundred thousand project for the whole thing.
Yeah, I think the bathrooms were seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it was expensive.
So you're looking at four hundred grand for this guy.
We didn't have a lot of interest was the problem, though.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I got a [inaudible].
That small of a project was going on, when a lot of construction was going on.
Yeah.
We just, we didn't have contractors interested in something small.
And see, it's the same.
As a little bathroom building, so.
They've got that hospital contractor thing.
But he didn't, it was about bathrooms, I mean.
Yeah, I, I don't think they were on the plans, no, but that'll be there.
I'd, I'd ask that question, I think.
We have not written a check to anyone, though, for the Skate Two Eight Project.
Right, okay. But there were, there was some discussion that there could be some potential changes in the location or the town's desire to locate the skate park somewhere else, but those have since been calmed with my, talking to the manager who, they reaffirmed their indication that they were going to put it up there at the quit my property.
Okay.
They use pigs bathrooms, couldn't they?
Did you what?
They use all these pigs bathrooms, couldn't they?
Sure. That's a real idea, riding skateboard down the aisle. I thought of that.
The International Friendship Center, international, what's, what is that?
They're located in Highlands, and the project that they requested funding for was for their food pantry.
I've said and heard of it.
They've applied to us before for the community funding pool. It's really good to see new organizations apply, though, because that gives us an opportunity to, you know, really maximize the dollars that you all allocate.
I guess the word international company.
Well, I think, yeah, they have a lot of different clients from different places. And so I know that they do some literacy training as well as some, of food distribution and assistance with, you know, affordable living kinds of things.
I saw the word friendships in, that's what I thought it was, which it is.
We appreciate the funding, too, members. This, this was created for one reason.
Who is your, who else is on your team?
Patrick, Bobby Contino, Andrea Anderson, help me.
Jenkins from Roya up in Highlands. Just to remind you of his name, Stephanie.
Yes, yes, Stephanie Jenkins.
Jacob up in Highlands. Kyle.
Oh, and Bonnie Potts, also from Highlands.
Diane.
Right, from Reed to Me at Union School. It's a good group.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve is presented.
Second. Commissioner, my Commissioner Shills, second by Commissioner Beal, all in favor, seeing if I'm a saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Have you been notified?
They've not been notified yet, so the next step is usually Pam Ledford will send, she'll draft a letter that will go out to each of these organizations with a contract and they need to sign that, return that, and then there's a check that's written to each organization for that.
Patrick, I guess you and I are, we're going to talk about this until they get notified.
Well, I, I think this is a public meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I have not had a conversation with the executive director.
Thank you.
Proposed child and family specialty plan Medicaid waiver.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is, I know it's getting late, but this is a very important item. I'd like to ask Shelley Foreman, who's our representative from Bayou for this district, to come up and also, of course, our DSS director, Patrick Bettenborg. This is something that we feel is very, very important. This committee in Raleigh met today. Patrick, watch that and listen to it. We've talked with Senator Foreman at Lent. You have a letter in there, and I'm going to let them explain to you. This is from, this is from Secretary Cody Kinsley of DHHS, composed by our chairman. And that, and so, Patrick, I'm going to let you please, as DSS director, why we've taken this step in, in our thirty-one counties to oppose what the state has proposed. And we certainly have had conversations with Kevin. Of course, he's been occupied with some other things and, but he did voice to this committee his opposition also to what the state has proposed. So Patrick, you and Shelley.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal, and I'll, I'll lean on Shelley quite a bit to help me out with sort of the background, and I don't want to take a, a real long time explaining this, but the, the long and short of this is that DHHS has proposed a couple of policy papers spanning the past couple of years that propose the idea of instituting a statewide plan to serve. Initially, it was children who were served by foster care, the child welfare system, as well as adoption assistance, to put them in a single plan across the state in which an entity, similar to what's happening with Medicaid managed care, where a private entity might come in and provide all of the physical and mental and behavioral health needs for those children. The second plan goes on to explain some expansion of that group to some other child welfare-involved families. But the reality is, in Macon County, we have what we consider a working product in place already. Vaya Health has been around in some form or fashion or another for nearly fifty years. They started out as Smoky Mountain Mental Health. And over those fifty years, counties in the western part of the state have developed a very close working relationship with what is now our local management entity managed care organization. I recognize that that's not necessarily the case all across the state. Other county departments of social services expressed quite a bit of concern about their working relationships with their LME, MCOs. And in part, that is what's led to this concept of developing a statewide network to support these children and these families that are involved with the child welfare system. At the risk of sounding a little bit out of place, I just want to point out that not every great idea comes out of Raleigh. I realize I'm saying that at great personal risk. However, great DSS directors do come out of Raleigh. In this case, what we feel like we have is we have a fantastic working relationship with Vaya. It's not always been smooth, it's not always been great, but we've at least come to the table and we figure out how to work with one another to help get our needs met. The last thing that we would want to see is a plan that, and another, another plan that kind of takes away from that working relationship. And, and the discussion today in Raleigh was the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee for DHHS, and Deputy Secretary Richard was there and presented. But there were quite a few counterpoints to Deputy Secretary Richard's discussion around a single statewide plan. And Shelley, I'll let Shelley talk a little bit about why specifically Vaya can probably help meet this need for this population better than anybody.
Before Shelley speaks, this is, just remember, gentlemen, this is another, we feel strongly, and Shelley's going to make points of how we came up at value, the board did, that, I'm a member, as Patrick is also a member. And what he does, it's another stab at taking authority away from the county. It's just, that's all this is. And you think about if you've got a child in crisis and they're in the ER, they're going to give you an eight-hundred number to dial. Good luck.
Yeah.
Or wherever, who knows? And that's what this will do. That's exactly what it'll do. So Shelley, go ahead.
Well, and thank you, Commissioner Beal and Patrick, so much for your support. I guess the main thing that we were concerned about is this whole notion of a separate Medicaid waiver for this expanded DSS population, which would now not only include foster care children, children in foster care, but also adults who were caregivers, guardians. It would include other children or siblings that weren't in foster care that could get services, and it would include folks in the in-home program through DSS, which is a pretty large number of people that are be served. So it really is taking that whole pool of Medicaid folks and putting DSS in the position where they are going to have to have a relationship with the state vendor, a private insurance company, to try to have their needs met. As Patrick said, Vaya isn't perfect. We have a system where there's not enough money, there's not enough providers, there's not enough sometimes, but we're a public agency and we treat our DSS partners, as well as public health and you, as a sister agency, and we continue to come back. Patrick can call me, actually, Patrick and Commissioner Beal can call our CEO, you can call multiple people, but you also have myself in the community. We have embedded care managers who are working on cases. So we just think, and what we've asked in asking for your support, is any of this to occur would have to be approved by the General Assembly. This is, cannot occur unless the General Assembly enacts new legislation or additional legislation to allow this. So to express your concerns about a statewide plan versus a regional plan that would encompass our LME, MCO regions across the state, the timing of the plan, it's a very quick turnaround, and we think that that is not giving our community partners, the state, the General Assembly, time to really think this through and explore options, and that we really feel like it would, there are not going to be new providers out here, right? And so it's creating additional administrative overhead. So right now, the providers we work with are also contracting with the four standard plans that are new, Vaya, and then they would have to create a separate administrative process to contract with a statewide vendor to do just this DSS population. So we just have a lot of concerns, and we're asking you to express those concerns to the secretary and the General Assembly.
An alarming number, gentlemen. In the seven far west counties alone, there's over six hundred children in the system, and over eighty of those is Macon County tonight. So if that don't get your attention, and you take some of those, some of those children, they'll be children in crisis probably tomorrow, Patrick, you'll be dealing with, so you'll dial that eight-hundred number. So, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the letter that you penned, and, and I would ask for approval of the letter to Secretary Cody Kinsley from the Macon County Board of County Commissioners opposing this statewide plan. And we, I think this is an opportunity to do what's right for these children who need every opportunity they could possibly get.
All right, so the motion?
Yes.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Shills, any questions?
This is just a resolution from this board? A letter from this?
Your letter.
It's not a resolution, it's a letter. I'm signing it, Chairman, to the Secretary of Health and Social.
I apologize, I'm not, I don't understand a lot of this stuff, so.
And I've also drafted a letter.
Oh, right.
On behalf of the Macon County Department of Social Services, also to Secretary Cody Kinsley, expressing the same concerns.
I've had all the DSS directors, yeah, in the western region.
I think you could see like the south western workforce development.
I didn't understand any of that.
I'll be glad to check with some of them.
Don't have a day.
They're going from, from a region of eight versus what we have now twenty-three, and the state wants to narrow it down to eight. That you lose contact.
Well, in this case, it'd be one. One private insurance company, most likely, who would be working with.
We've been down this road with mental health reforms. We've been down this road with every kind of reform.
Yeah.
And not that they had put out a, a system and see if it might work, they just throw it out there.
To what sticks.
They, they had a little program, a little glitch in a social service program one time. You might remember that.
Who's that, Ronnie?
The DHHS.
They just threw these programs out?
Well, that's what they did then with, with a computer program. They're supposed to be the best thing since sliced bread, and, and we're still can't blend ketchup with that.
Yes, we are.
So this is another thing that, that the bottom line is, it takes the authority away from our local DSS, and the real bottom line is what's good for these, these children.
Yeah.
And those of us that's involved with this and been talking about it for years, we think this is what's best for the children, to keep them local.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in our department.
I was going to say, there'd be no public board of directors that are accountable to the counties and communities, and there would be no regional advisory board accountable to the counties that they represent.
What it means on the ground for the Department of Social Services, we actually have a Vaya healthcare manager embedded in our office. So the story that I like to tell is when I've got a foster child that's in crisis, if that foster child meets certain mental health criteria, I've oftentimes seen my foster care social worker literally pulling up her laptop, sitting down on the floor with a Vaya Health worker with her laptop, and they're collaborating, trying to figure out how they're going to be able to serve this child, this child, rather than sleeping in an office over the weekend where we're not at all equipped to handle that kind of mental health.
I want to hear, you got it so much.
I appreciate that, Commissioner.
All right, all in favor, seeing if I'm a saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you much.
All right, consent agenda, take a motion to approve all, unless somebody would like to send one of the items removed. We're all.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hickon. Second by Commissioner Young, all in favor.
Aye.
We only have one appointment, we've already completed one tonight. Reappointment of Janet Green as the ETJ representative on the town of Franklin, Atlanta, for to give a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor.
Aye.
I, I do understand we have, Mr. Attorney, a reason for a closed session tonight.
Yes.
You expect any action?
No.
No action?
Motion to go in a closed session under the statute of.
Motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Hickon, all in favor.
Aye.
Mr. Hickon, Mr. Hickon, let me show you a map. Let me show you a map.
It's in here, it's in here.